To order, Supervisor Lofton, would you lead us in an invocation?
Yes.
Let's power heads. Our Heavenly Father, as we assemble here tonight to take up the business that is before us, we ask for your guiding hand to give us the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are right for the citizens of this great county. We also ask that, in this time of turmoil, so much turmoil around the world, that you be with those who are in the midst of that turmoil, in the midst of those seemingly unexplainable acts that mankind does to one another, and we ask that you give them the countenance. We ask you their blessing upon them, so that they may make the sacrifices that it takes to get through this to a brighter day. And we ask that you be with our men and women in uniform who protect us each day and protect the liberties that we so freely enjoy, again, in this great county in which we are blessed to live. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Vice Chairman De Haven, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand and face the flag for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adopting the agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one change, and that would be to delete the Parks and Recreation Commission report from the agenda.
Delete? And then we will be adding the EVA appointments under committees?
Yes, sir.
All right. With those two changes, are there any other discussion items, or is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Will the agenda be approved with the change, Mr. Chairman?
All right. We have a motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Next, consent agenda. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs for the board's consideration. Tab C, Resolution of Appreciation to Joy Scholl Gelner. Tab I, Human Resources Committee Report. Tab M, Transportation Committee Report. And Tab P, Road Abandonment Route 9159, Old Gainesboro Road.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Motion made by Supervisor Collins. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one citizen, John P. Good, Jr., 181 Fox Ridge Road, Winchester, Virginia.
Please come forward, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I was the chairman of the subcommittee of the Business Friendly Group that you established related to land use matters. You'll be discussing later this evening the landscaping ordinance of Frederick County and some changes to that, and the Business Friendly Committee was very concerned about that, and we followed it through the process and participated at several points. I've read what's being proposed to you this evening, and in short, it does not satisfy the suggestions and thoughts that the Business Friendly Committee had. It misses the boat in a lot of ways, and as Jackie Gleason said in Smokey and the Bandit, what we have here is probably a failure to communicate. We did try. We followed the process. We met with the DRRC Committee, and actually, there were even members of that committee that had some suggestions we didn't have, but those didn't get reflected in the final product, so I can't explain that either. I think what we... The ordinance remains the equivalent of plowing your garden in the spring with explosives. That's one way to do it, but I'm not sure the harvest justifies that. And I think it's, as I mentioned to the Planning Commission in expressing concerns about this, I'll correct something I said before. I originally said that this is not a public safety matter, but actually, I think it is, because I've had two instances in the last month and a half where I nearly struck another vehicle because the landscape materials crammed into some of these projects, not on VDOT right-of-way, but on what you might call interparcel connectors. Well, one guy's got a stop sign, and I have the right-of-way, of course, and I can't see them coming, they can't see me coming, and twice I've almost crashed into somebody. So it does have some public safety ramifications, and I'll correct that previous statement that I made. I, as a citizen and as a businessperson, I don't know what else to recommend to you to solve this problem, but two things. I think we need to remember that the average person in Frederick County doesn't need to touch a site plan, really doesn't have exposure to this ordinance in terms of writing a check off of their account to pay for having it done or to buy the materials and to maintain the materials. What they do is often totally voluntary. If they want to plant a lot of stuff in their yard, go for it. The Business Friendly Committee, interestingly enough, probably is a pretty good concentration of people that do have to deal with this ordinance, because they're doing commercial development, industrial development, and other things where it comes into play. Finally, I would suggest that we'd be willing to draft a comparable ordinance that would meet our requirements for you to look at if you'd be so moved. Again, I don't know what else to suggest to you. Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Riley?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Supervisors comments? Hearing, none. We'll move on to the minutes. Special meeting, August 12, 2014.
Move approval as printed?
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the special meeting, August 12, 2014, are approved. Next is the work session with the Planning Commission, August 12, 2014.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the work session with the Planning Commission, August 12, 2014, are approved. Next is the regular meeting, August 13, 2014.
Chairman, move for approval as submitted.
We have a motion by Supervisor De Haven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, August 13, 2014, are approved. Next is the special meeting, August 19, 2014.
Move approval as submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the special meeting, August 19, 2014, are approved. And finally, is the work session with the Economic Development Authority, August 19, 2014.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The work session minutes with the... Minutes of the work session with the Economic Development Authority, August 19, 2014, are approved. Next on the agenda is approval and ratification of the entry into a contract with Springfield Incorporated for consultant services for recruitment and hiring of a county administrator. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman, I'd move for approval of the resolution.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is approved. Next, committee appointments.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, Heather, Virginia Association of Counties?
Excuse me. I missed out a very important part. We have a special guest tonight to make a presentation. He did not have a letter beside of his solve. I would just sorry, sir.
That's okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bo Blevins with the Virginia Association of Counties. Certainly a delight to be here and bringing good news and a congratulations on winning a VACO Achievement Award. This is Frederick County's first VACO Achievement Award, but it's the first time you've applied, so you're batting a thousand. You're doing well. The award is for an innovative program, and it's for the creation of the Lake Holiday Sanitary District back in 2009. Our judges in our program, who are Ted Povar, who's with the Institute, Virginia Institute of Government, William Quarles, who's a former supervisor in Goochlin County, and Linda Lumpkin, who's a former deputy county administrator in Essex County, they're our judges. They look at these entries independently. We had over... We had 80... We had 61 entries this year. It's a competitive program, so there were only 18 winners, and you are the one for the innovative program of the VACO Achievement Awards. So I think with the Lake Holiday Achievement Award that you submitted, you recognized a problem in that community. You went out and worked with the community to get something done. We recognize that. Our judges recognize that. I think you finished the project with this... I think it was a dam spillway last year, in 2013, under budget, and our judges really noticed that and were proud of that. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to present you the award. If you're okay, to come down and receive it.
I think it should go to you. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, committee appointments. Extension Leadership Council, Opeken, are we ready?
We're not. We're working on it and should be ready next month.
Historic Resources Advisory Board, Redbud?
Yes, sir.
We don't have anything from the next couple there. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Back Creek?
No, sir. Mrs. Turner did not want to be reappointed, and I'm sorry.
Skip to one. Back up here. The Board of Building Appeals. We have a recommendation. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'd move that we appoint Robert Rhodes.
Is this an appointment or a recommendation?
A recommendation, I guess.
It is an appointment.
It is an appointment.
It is an appointment. You are correct.
Okay.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Robert Wells is hereby appointed to the Board of Building Appeals. Trying to make sure I didn't miss anything else there. Now, go ahead Supervisor Lofton on Historic Resources Advisory, Back Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Talking with Mrs. Turner, she does not wish to be reappointed. She and I are working together to find someone that is interested in that spot, but we do not have someone yet.
All right. Next is Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Board.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to recommend the reappointment of Michelle Landon to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Board. She has been a proactive and active member on that board, and I would like to see her remain.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Michelle Landon is hereby reappointed to the Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Board. And next is the laid before you this evening, and I apologize for the lack of previous notice, but recommended appointees to the EVA. James Longerbean, Bob Clayder, Doug Rinker, Gary Lofton, Josh Phelps, Dennis McNutt, and Richard Dick. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think we're very lucky to have the opportunity to move for approval of these nominees.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, should I abstain for that since I'm one of the nominees?
Yes, sir. You may.
Thank you.
I don't think we voted yet. Opposed, in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then Mr. Longerbean, Mr. Clayder, Mr. Rinker, Mr. Lofton, Mr. Phelps, Mr. McNutt, and Mr. Dick are hereby appointed to the EVA. Next is a request from the Frederick County Schools to schedule a public hearing date to participate in the fall 2014 Virginia Public School Authority Bond Sale. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The school board is requesting that the board conduct a public hearing for the bond sale on October 8, 2014, after which the board can take action. Preliminary copy of the board's resolution is attached for information. Proceeds from the spring bond sale will satisfy the projected cash needs until the next bond sale in the fall. The funds are for the replacement middle school project, and the amount of the bond application is $15 million.
Questions of Mr. Riley? And we have some school folks here. Do we have questions? If not, is there a motion?
Send it to the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes. Next is a request from Round Hill Fire and Rescue Company for appropriation of proffer funds. Is that true, Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Round Hill Community Fire and Rescue Company requests the Board of Supervisors appropriate $146,790 from the current proffer funds allocated to the Round Hill Fire and Rescue Company. The funds will be used to pay the company's share of the design cost for the new fire station and event center.
Questions of Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the appropriation of $146,790 from the proffer funds.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven. Discussion. Hearing, none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refund. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the commissioner's request dated August 25, 2014, to authorize the treasurer to refund New World Pasta Company, Inc., the amount of $35,674.50 for adjustment to personal property taxes for tax year 2013, and the amount of $8,782.54 for adjustment to personal property taxes for tax year 2014. This refund is a result of the company's appeal of misfiled machinery and tools as taxable when the property was in fact deemed intangible under the applicable law and therefore not subject to personal property taxation. The total refund amount is $44,457.4 and New World Pasta Company, Inc., is willing to have the refund applied to other balances due. The commissioner indicates that the documentation and details for this refund meets all requirements, and this is pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.1, 3981A of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. The county attorney hereby notes his consent for the proposed action. The Board of Supervisors is requested to act on the request for approval and the supplemental appropriation as indicated in the commissioner's memorandum.
Hearing, none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the refund as well as the supplemental appropriation.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing, none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is the Public Works Committee report. Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, the Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, August 26, at 8:00 a.m. Staff brought to us a situation that developed with the current contractor that handles the newspaper recycling services, and that contractor has gone out of business, and it's a timing issue to avoid interruption of our recycling program, and that's why it's coming directly to the board tonight. We don't want some of that stuff ended up in the landfill. We want to continue to recycle it. A local company that we're doing business with for other recycling has agreed to take the material. We need to collect it and deliver it to the Southern Scrap site. The company that went out of business has offered to sell us the containers, which staff recommends that we do. We can maintain those. The cost for the 33 cans for the recycling is $14,850. There's also in your agenda a list of a carryforward of funds that will help with the cost of these cans. So my motion to the board tonight is for the purchase of 33 cans at $14,850 and the carryforward of the funds as attached. I think there's like seven line items to be carried forward as in your agenda. My motion would include both those items.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing, none. We'll vote. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Next, code and ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, the Code and Ordinance Committee met on Monday, August 25, to discuss two items that were brought seeking to amend the current code, Frederick County Code. The first would allow, enable, our clerk's office to charge an additional $5 fee in all criminal traffic cases that have resulted in a conviction. These will be used locally to help reimburse local law enforcement for the implementation and maintenance of an electronic summons system. This system would permit law enforcement officers to print out summonses on location with the possibility of some data being downloaded directly to the summons form, also to submit the summons information electronically to the appropriate court. In speaking with local law enforcement, this would actually save time, money, and effort on our law enforcement staff. They've asked that the committee has forwarded this to the board for review and seeking to have it set for a public hearing.
That's your motion?
That's my motion, Your Honor.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing, none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It will be scheduled for a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, the other item that was brought up, brought to the attention of the Code and Ordinance Committee was to once again amend the taxation statute of the Frederick County Code. Excuse me while my iPad catches up with my finger. There we go. In essence, what it would be, would implement a $25 fee for some wills and probate in the circuit court, and these fees would be used for the filing of those particular deeds... Excuse me, wills and probate, and it's only on, for real estate-only estates. This is once... This was before the board a few years ago. It did not pass, but the clerk is at... The clerk of the courts has asked that be presented to the board once again for a public hearing, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Is this a fee that's going to end up in excess fees and got to go back to the state?
No. This would be kept... According to Mrs. Hogan, this would be kept... This would be collected by her for her maintenance of the system. She anticipates... Well, we can get into this more, but she anticipates only maybe a dozen fall into this realm.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. The motion is to send to public hearing. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. It'll be scheduled for a public hearing.
That concludes my report.
Thanks, sir. Next is the Finance Committee. Supervisor De Haven?
Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee met in the First floor conference room in this building on Wednesday, August 20, 2014, at 8:00 a.m., and all members were present. Item number one was a discussion with the Lord Fairfax Community College folks, and we're going to continue that discussion after their board has met again. So item number two was a request to the Main Street Agricultural, and they were requesting a supplemental appropriation, an amount of $5,000 for sponsorship of the Winchester Main Street Agriculture Event on September 20, 2014. Local funds are required, and the committee forwards this to the Board of Supervisors with that recommendation.
Questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since I was talking with one of the event organizers about this particular funding, I heard the comments made at the Finance Committee meeting, and if it please the board, I would like no action taken to give me time to work with the event organizer to go over those comments and see how they might be addressed.
So the motion is what?
No motion.
Okay.
Just a request to allow me to speak with the event organizer.
Does anyone object? Okay, then we will not... We'll take it at that.
Thank you.
Consensus of the board? Go ahead, sir.
Item number three is the Public Works Director request of following supplemental appropriations. These requests represent a carryforward of unspent 2014 funds, and all the requests have been approved by the Public Works Committee. The committee recommends approval of items A, B, and C, being a general fund in the amount of $4,500 for road sign materials, a general fund in the amount of $1,330 for accessories for the new van purchased by the animal shelter, and item C was a landfill fund in the amount of $420,000 for the final phase of the Permit 40 to purchase and to purchase a used motor grader, and unexpected changes in the work to reconstruct the Leachette Holding Pond. Committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing, none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?[1574.32]
This amount represents a carryforward of unspent funds in fiscal year 2014 to outfit the new Fire Marshal K-9 vehicle. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number five is the Sheriff request a general fund supplemental appropriation, the amount of $1,000. This amount represents a donation received for the dive team. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number six, the Finance Director request an EDA fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $551,622 to transfer funds from the general fund to the newly created Economic Development Authority. This amount includes the original EDC budget and funds for approved merit increases. Committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next is a public hearing, outdoor festival permit request of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. Mr. Alley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a festival permit request on the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation for the 150th anniversary of the Battle of Cedar Creek, and this is pursuant to the County Code, Chapter 86. Festival's permit required. Festival will be held on Saturday and Sunday, October 18 and 19, 2014, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each day, to be held on the grounds of the Cedar Creek Battlefield, 8437 Valley Pike, Middletown, Virginia, property owned by the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. The applicant is here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Applicant wish to speak?
Good evening. I'm Tim Stowe, the President of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of the applicant? Thanks, sir.
I have one comment to make, and that is, that's okay, the thoroughness of the application. We've seen some of these festival permit applications in the past that have been a little sketchy. This one was clearly thorough, and I appreciate the effort that went into it.
We're now will conduct the public hearing. This is a public hearing on an outdoor festival permit request of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation, 150th anniversary of the Battle of Cedar Creek. Festival to be held on Saturday and Sunday, October 18th and 19th, 2014, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each day, to be held on the grounds of Cedar Creek Battlefield, 8437 Valley Pike, Middletown, Virginia, property owned by Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this application? Signal will close the public hearing. I believe this is Back Creek.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion, I just want to make sure I know that the county attorney has some comments on this application, and as, I want to make sure I'm correct, and that Mr. Stowe's response cleared up those comments.
He did, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. That being the case, I would move for approval of the application for an outdoor festival permit for the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passed, and the festival permit is approved. Next is another public hearing on a 2030 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, and it deals specifically with the sewer and water service area expansion to serve the fourth high school due to be constructed in the future here in Frederick County. As noted, the 83 acres is immediately adjacent to the existing sewer and water service area in the vicinity of the Admiral Byrd Middle School and Evendale Elementary School. And for your orientation on the map, on the screen to your left, and also part of your agenda package, the 83 acres, which is owned by Frederick County, is highlighted in red. Just immediately to the north, you can see the existing school complex at the end of Justice Drive. The property is located within the Sentinel Eastern Frederick Area Plan. The expansion of the sewer and water service area in this location would be consistent with that plan. The resulting amendment to the map would be, as depicted on the screen to your left, which shows the sewer and water service area boundary, the highlighted green line, in essence, surrounding the entire property that was identified before, the entire 83 acres. So that modification would be to the sewer and water service area and would be duly reflected, therefore, in the county's long-range land use plan and that boundary. The Planning Commission discussed this at their last meeting and recommended approval of the proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, and following the public hearing this evening, we're seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors. Should there be any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you, and also to note that we have representatives from the schools here this evening with us, too.
Questions of staff or the school officials? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're now conducting a public hearing on 2030 Comprehensive, oh, I'm sorry, did school folks desire to speak? There were no questions. We'll conduct a public hearing on 2030 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Frederick County Public Schools Sewer and Water Service Area Adjustment. The request is for consideration of amendment to the sewer and water service area to serve the proposed fourth high school of approximately 83 acres. Property is located adjacent to and east of Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle and Evendale Elementary Schools, and is identified by property identification number 76-A-96E in the Shawnee Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to either speak for or against the, this 2030 Comprehensive Plan Amendment? Signal will close the public hearing. This is Shawnee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend approval of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan Amendment as presented for the sewer and water service area expansion.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a waiver request and master development plan review, Wright Renovations Incorporated. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This property is located in the Redbud Magisterial District. It's currently zoned RP, residential performance, and it's surrounded by, its land use is residential, and it's surrounded by, like, properties. The MDP in waiver request for a subdivision of, for three residential lots, and the properties are located at Dal J Circle, which is Route 1240 and Anderson Avenue. If I can turn your attention to the map on your left, this is the area where the properties are subject to this master development plan and waiver. The second picture you see up there now, this is the existing conditions that are currently out on Dal J Circle in Anderson Avenue. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the, of Section 144 that has to do with curb and gutters. Justification for this, surrounding properties, are older properties. They don't have any curb and gutter out there. They're also requesting the, well, part of the six waivers are from the sidewalks, pedestrian walkways. Again, the area doesn't have it. Also, they're requesting the streetlights, and the ordinance specifically, in these small lots have to have streetlights. Again, there's no streetlights out there. Again, lot access, it's interesting that through this application process, we find out that Anderson Avenue is a private street, has been a private street. So again, it currently serves 103 Anderson Avenue. At the ending result, I will show you where that serves on here. So again, they're asking for a lot access waiver. Buffering screenings, again, justification for this waiver is no homeowner's association. Part of the buffering screening waivers also is rec units, again, with no HOA, no rec units in the area. That's part of the waiver request. Declaration of common open space, again, no HOA. It's an older neighborhood. It's there, so that's what the applicant is requesting. And finally, should the board grant these waivers, this is what the ending result is going to look like. It's actually, it's a cleanup exercise. If, the two houses that you're, that you've seen in the first exhibit, were actually on the same piece of property. Now, they have three properties, or three houses on their, on their own properties, their own tax numbers. It kind of clears up title issues and things of that nature. With that, Mr. Chairman, the Planning Commission did review this request, and it did approve it on its August 20, 2014 meeting. There were no comments, and there were no, there was no citizen comments, obviously. And while the MDP is presenting its informational item, staff is seeking a decision for the Board of Supervisors on these six waiver requests, and for your convenience, these are the six waivers the applicant is asking for to move forward with this subdivision. Again, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have on this particular, it's kind of a unique one, subdivision of master development plan with waivers. For the record, Mr. Michael Arts of Marshall Lake, who presents, with this application, is here to answer any question that you or any board members may have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, any one of those maps would work. The first one you showed is probably the one that caught my attention. That one's okay. Does 130, the structure that appears on 134 actually exist?
Yeah, yes, sir. It does exist.
So I was curious as to why it doesn't show up in our aerial photography.
That's an older aerial photography, and, yeah, it is, and it's, I'm going to let Mr. Arts, he can explain how that happened, because it was an actual parcel that was there. It has a building permit, and that has been built on this year.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions of staff? Mr. Arts.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to see you all again. Thank you for the opportunity. This is a pretty straightforward exercise. What we have here is a situation where a lot, Lot 1, that was created. Go to the existing conditions. There we go. Lot 1 was created in 1928 when W. O. Anderson conveyed that lot to the Fletchers. That had a dwelling on it. That's the one that's identified as 132 Dal J Circle. That would be the house in the upper left-hand corner. It was built in, actually built in 1917. In 1929, Lot Number 2, on the right-hand side, was conveyed to the Fletchers as well. In 1971, they built the house that's identified as 103 Anderson Avenue. Pretty much at this, well, today, what we're looking to do is to subdivide Lot Number 1 into two tracks. That's pretty much all this exercise is about. Plus, we have an encroachment of the screen porch on the rear of the Anderson Avenue lot, and by performing the boundary line adjustment after we do the subdivision, we will be cleaning up that encroachment as well. So that is what this is all about. I'm willing to answer any other questions that you may have.
You briefly outlined two of the structures in their, year built, not the third.
Oh, the third one was built this year on Lot Number 2. Lot Number 2 was created in 1929, but no house was ever built on it.
Questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
This is Redbud.
Yes, sir, it is. Mr. Chairman, I've driven past this location several times. I think that this should be approved. This neighborhood, obviously, as he said, is a much older neighborhood. There is no curb. There is no gutter. There is no sidewalks. If we built sidewalks there, they would connect to nothing. There's no sidewalk for about a mile. So, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would submit that, I would ask for this be approved.
All right, the motion then is to approve six waivers. Is that all that's required?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have.
Just for your, there's six waivers that the board is looking at.
No other action?
There was no other action, no, sir, just the waivers.
We have a motion to approve these six waivers for this application. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the waivers are approved. Next is a resolution, a request to forward a public hearing for the Southern Frederick Area Plan, an amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back on August 12th, we held a work session between the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission and discussed in detail the Southern Frederick Area Plan. Of course, this is an amendment to the county's Comprehensive Plan that basically invites the folks from down in the southern part of Frederick County to participate in a land use plan that updates the original 277 plan. And as you're aware, many have been involved with that process over the past, past more than several months, has brought us to this point with the Southern Frederick Area Plan. So yes, this evening, we are seeking direction to complete the final stretch of this, and that's to go through the public hearing process of both the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. During that work session, of course, we had a discussion, we also discussed the maps that were presented, and the Board of Supervisors sought some additional clarification with regards to what was actually changing in some locations and what the, what the net result would be. What staff has done is prepared a series of maps, if you will, that was shared with the Com Planning Committee this week, that hopefully clarifies the changes that were made and identifies those residential and commercial changes. I'll show you a very quick sample of that as I slide on through the different maps, and basically to get to this point where I can illustrate that within the land use plan, we have identified two particularly pertinent areas of change, one in the Lakeside Tesco Road area, and the second in the White Oak Lake Frederick area. And so in addition to zooming into those areas to sport the changes to the land use plan, we've shown some examples of before and after, if you will, the top being the existing land use plan and the lower being the proposed land use plan. So what staff proposes, as I stated in the memos, this goes out and forward to the public hearing, that this document is made available not only to the Board of Supervisors, but to the citizens in that area, so everybody is familiar with the clarification that's needed as part of this land use change. Again, it includes the existing maps, the existing text, and a series of additional maps and pictures that clarify those changes that have been made, so everybody understands the work that has been done by the citizens in that area, again, updating the Comprehensive Plan. Didn't want to go into the whole presentation here this evening, because there's quite a few little maps and clarifications, but hopefully that gives you a sample, an example of what has been done to help illustrate this plan, as hopefully we get the go-ahead to move it to public hearing. Should there be any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for the board this evening.
Questions? Is this both a Peckin and Shawnee, or all a Peckin?
Both.
All right, then, a Peckin and Shawnee. What's your pleasure? You ready for a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we send it forward to public hearing.
We have a motion to send to public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you, sir.
Set for public hearing. All right, next is a discussion on the revisions to landscaping requirements, business-friendly recommendations. Go ahead.
I accidentally unplugged the iPad. My apologies. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back in October of 2012, the Board of Supervisors formed the Business Friendly Committee to evaluate the current processes and procedures being utilized by the county. And the purpose of the effort was to search for ways that the county could better meet the needs of new and existing businesses within the community. Now, the committee's final report was adopted by the board back in July of 2013. And one recommendation contained in the report was for a complete review and reevaluation of the buffer and landscape requirements to provide a well-defined purpose to allow for flexibility in project site landscaping, tree preservation, and affected development buffers. Now, the DRC reviewed the landscaping requirements, as well as information provided by the Business Friendly Committee at their September 2013, January 2014, and February 2014 meetings. The DRC recognized that the buffer and landscape sections were extensively revised and changes adopted by the board in 2012, and the committee felt that the existing landscape requirements in place were appropriate. Now, the DRC did recommend that the parking lot landscaping requirements be moved into the main landscaping sections to help consolidate the landscaping ordinances into one section. Now, those changes were then forwarded by the DRC to the Planning Commission, where the Planning Commission discussed at their meeting on April 2nd, 2014. Now, at that meeting, a member of the Business Friendly Committee felt that the DRC did not address all of their concerns, and they wanted an opportunity to speak to the committee. So the Planning Commission sent the revisions back to the DRC to give the Business Friendly representative an opportunity to address the committee. So that was undertaken at the DRC's April 24th meeting, and Mr. Good was given a chance to address the committee. Now, following the presentation, the DRC did request inclusion of an allowance to do proportional site upgrades with minor site plans, which meaning, meaning that sites that are proposing minimal upgrades could request a waiver of the landscaping requirements. So staff did incorporate that change that was requested by the DRC, and it was then discussed again by the DRC at their June 26th meeting, and the DRC was satisfied with the changes proposed, and they sent it back to the Planning Commission for review. So, in all, the changes that have been reviewed and recommended by the DRC are first moving the parking lot landscaping into the main landscaping section, second, addition of a section pertaining to minor site plans. There's an updated definition of site plan to include minor site plans, and there's also a statement that the zoning administrator can determine the number of landscaping plants proportional to additions shown on a minor site plan. So the Planning Commission then again discussed this at their August 20th meeting, and they sent it forward to the Board of Supervisors for discussion with a minor change. So tonight, we are seeking direction from the Board of Supervisors as to whether this is ready to be sent forward to public hearing. I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Does there exist a list of where there's consensus and where there's not?
Between the Business Friendly Recommendations and the DRC Recommendations? Really, I only have the notes that were taken from the committee meetings. I could put together a list if the board wanted to see that.
About the other supervisors, it, it could happen before it goes to public hearing, or it could happen before I cast a vote following a public hearing, but I'll have to see it.
Right. What, what's?
I need to know what somebody thinks is not good.
That would definitely be easy for staff to, to create, because what, what we did for the DRC meetings, I took all the recommendations that were given to us from the Business Friendly Group, and I inserted each of those into the landscaping section so that the DRC could easily see where the recommendation fit into the ordinance, and then the DRC discussed whether or not they felt the recommendation was appropriate.
All that I know is in, in history, I've been escorted to develop subdivisions where the landscaping was foolish, and that's all I could comprehend, is to see what had been done, and somebody said, why did I have to do that? And so now I look at words that come before somebody does something, and I just need to know what it is that somebody doesn't like.
Yes, sir.
And why, before. And why, before I could pass it. So, I don't know about the rest of you, whatever your pleasure is here. Somebody want to speak?
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman. And just in a way of comment, I think that the changes that have been proposed are all positive. Consolidating into one area in our ordinance, the landscape section, is something that I've felt like needed to be done for a very long time. We've been wrestling with this beast for a long time, and I think that I said a long time ago that we'll probably always be wrestling with this one. But I do think that as much as I care about our enhancement of our green environment, there are some issues, I think, in our current ordinance that really should, we should work hard enough to find a path that we think will be a solution to some of those. So, I don't think we're ready to go to public hearing. A lot of situations, I've watched very carefully the outcome of our ordinance as it's been implemented over time. I really am afraid that in a lot of instances, we're in a situation where less would be more in a lot of the circumstances in what we actually see the impact of our ordinance implemented. So, I think that we should attempt to continue the discussion. I think we all need to commit to rendering input instead of asking the committee to continue to look for input that they've worked pretty hard to find. I think we should continue to work on it.
Other comments, Mr. Chairman? Supervisor Fisher?
Yeah, and looking through this, and Supervisor DeHaven's right, we've been at this a long time. Are there any other areas in our ordinances that you pulled in the parking lot? Are there any other areas that could be pulled into this to consolidate?
There are certain landscaping requirements that pertain to certain uses that are contained under supplemental requirements that I didn't pull into this just because they pertain so directly to a certain use.
Okay.
That's the only ones I left within their relevant section.
In trying to read through this thing, I get hung up in the details. I get down a page and a half and get lost in some of the details of it. But I'm agreeing with Supervisor DeHaven, maybe a little bit more time to look at this because I know when we did like the round hill site plan, requirement to put so many trees in, and we tried to stick them under lights, for instance. And, you know, that just doesn't, there's lights, power lines, and if we're trying to put too much in, I think a little more discussion on this. And along with the chairman has said, I'd be willing to see what the Business Friendly Committee, if they wanted to propose something. But I do recall that I think what they proposed the first time was way too simplified to suit me. I'll be honest with you on that, Mr. Good. But, you know, if they wanted to give another shot at it and to give us some more input, I think continuing this discussion would be good. And I would agree with Supervisor DeHaven on this.
Other comments? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a simple man, especially when it comes to code in ordinances that put a burden on people as they develop. Now, I do agree that there needs to be some goal set, or is it? But to me, I'm a minimalist, and that is fact that if you say that the goal is that if you have one zoning, that the headlights should not be shining in another zoning adjacent to it, or that streetlights should not shine, and I'm of the opinion that you let the engineers, the landscape architects, tell you what they feel is best for that instead of having a list of what trees are approved, what's not approved. And I know that's a very minimalist view, but I think somewhere between where we are and that is where I'd rather be, to be honest with you.
Anyone else? I guess the downside to continued work, if you made any progress, your progress doesn't go and affect until you do something with it, and you're stuck with the old until you got, replace it with something. So, I guess that's the downside of it. I think this board does need to spend a minute here to try to help staff to what to say to the Planning Commission and the various committees that work on it about what we'd like to see come back. I don't know that I could summarize what we've said, those of you that spoke. I believe there is more simplification than I heard, a desire not to have unnecessary. But I feel like folks are going to want you to tell them what it is that somebody wants them to do, correct? Did you gather anything from the discussion that was helpful to you if you go back and work with groups? How do we get there?
Honestly, I mean, it.
Because if you don't like what you've got, you want to improve it, and you improve it a little bit, but you're getting hung up on the improvements, then we're still stuck with something that nobody wanted or now deems as could have been better. And that's a bad situation to be in. So, I'm trying to move forward in a positive way and let the board help us come to direction for those who will work on this.
As far, we did an extensive revision back in 2012 where we simplified the ordinance quite a bit to get to the point where we're at now. I'd be happy to take the existing ordinance and insert all the Business Friendly recommendations into it so the board can see what was recommended versus what we have now.
I'm kind of at an impasse if the committee and the Planning Commission say, "We like it," and the board says, "They don't."
Right. Because, I mean, implementation of the existing ordinance is easy for staff, you know, with site plans and working with engineers. And our ordinance is a lot more basic than many, many surrounding localities. So, that we have concerns about, you know, reducing it much further.
Mr. Chairman, I might make a suggestion that might help us. It sounds like that your original request that you'd like to see the comparison of what was proposed and how that compares to what is existing might put us in good stead for a work session. There's some other topics that people are requesting for work session. I think we could probably handle it that way in a more informal setting, and the board could have the opportunity to express its views and opinions that way.
Well, if the staff has a feeling that that would lead to constructive dialogue, then that's what I'm searching for, how not to waste people's time and get there. But I wanted to spend as much time as we needed to this evening to go as far as we could. I fear we can't go very far.
I think you're correct, but I think in the work session atmosphere that we have and take the comparative data, you should be able to get to a decision point fairly quickly.
What's the board?
I'm fine with that approach. It's a good suggestion. I would encourage everyone to share what input and thoughts they have on the ordinance. It is a difficult read. You have to go through it multiple times to start getting a clearer picture. But I'm certainly going to commit to sharing my thoughts again with staff. I kind of gave up in frustration a good many years ago. Give it another shot.
Mr. Riley, if we wanted to go in a direction, would a consensus be good enough or you would desire a motion?
Consensus is fine.
Is there a consensus?
Yeah, I just had one question. Didn't I hear some support for what we have here is a step in the right direction, just really didn't go far enough? Are we going to end up with some confusion as to, as we consider this, is the, whether this is going to be approved? In other words, can this go forward to public hearing while we continue to work on it?
I think it's convoluted, but the flip side of it is if we take too long to do something else. I think, that's my opinion, that the best route would be hurry up and get a better product. But it's just an opinion. We were going through, we duplicate ourselves, I think. What do you folks think? Mr. Chairman?
Exactly. I mean, if we implement these changes, then the design community immediately has to start living with those. And while we're working on more changes that we hope to accomplish pretty quickly, I think that makes it harder for them than them having to live with what they're used to having to live with at the moment for a little longer.
So, I think the resolution, to a good point you make, is speed. Do we have a consensus?
I do.
Yes.
You okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, then, we'll move on. Discussion on zoning district buffer waivers.
Again, thank you. This was a request that staff received to revise the zoning ordinance to include a zoning district buffer waiver that allows the Board of Supervisors to eliminate or modify a buffer if the adjoining land use is designated in the adopted comprehensive plan for a use that would not require a buffer between the two properties. The waiver is drafted that's shown in the agenda would require support from the adjacent property owner that would be impacted. So, this was just the schematic that staff put in your agenda. It really just showed two properties, one that would, for example, on the left-hand side, be zoned industrially, and then the property on the right-hand side would be, say, zoned agriculturally with a house on it. That would throw in a category C buffer, which is 100-foot buffer. And then, say that the property that is zoned RA is comprehensively planned to also be industrially zoned. So, therefore, if the property was rezoned, a buffer would not be required between the two properties. So, what staff was asked by an applicant was to look at providing a waiver option for the Board of Supervisors. If the adjacent property owner were to sign off on the request, the applicant could take forward a waiver request in front of the board to eliminate that buffer. The DRC discussed it at their June 26th meeting, and they sent it forward to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission discussed this at their August 20th meeting, and they were okay with the change and sent it forward to the board. So, it's not worth seeking a direction from the board as to whether this is ready to be sent forward to public hearing. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Supervisor Lofton?
Hypothetically, if the property owner zoned M1 would get the adjacent owner's consent to waive the buffer, and the property owner of RA sold that land to someone else, but it was not rezoned industrial at that time, would we have to go about getting another approval from that next owner who would own that property?
No, because the waiver would apply to the M1 property's buffer. So, then they can then proceed with a site plan that would not have a buffer, and that would be approved. They would be vested in that site plan.
So, the owner of that RA property would basically commit any future owners of the RA property to that waiver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I looked at that a little bit different and wondered if there was any limitation on how long a waiver is good for without being used.
I mean, that's something we could, the existing ordinance doesn't have anything like that.
Because it becomes more problematic if somebody doesn't exercise the waiver, then that's when there's a change down the road somewhere, and somebody digs out a waiver that's five years, 10 years old, then it's a problem. But if they go ahead and do whatever it is they got to waiver, next purchaser sees what it is. So, I was wondering about that.
Right. At this point, when site plans are signed, site plans themselves are good for five years before they expire. We could also.
Five years, two then, maybe?
Guess the thought that I had also was more along where the PC was in their discussion, was if we have an M1 parcel, applies for the waiver, implements it, that user's gone, and another M1 user comes in and wants to do outdoor storage. Now, we have separate buffering requirements for outdoor storage that I guess would be implemented at that point.
Yes.
But the impact to that adjoiner would be very different in a redevelopment situation or a future redevelopment even by the same owner raises concerns. I'm willing to take a shot at it because I think that we've long thought that we need to try to find a way to address this situation. Damned if you do, and damned if you don't, but nothing's perfect.
Other questions?
Not so much a question, but a comment. If we're going to be looking at putting some sunset provision in this, might want to look at clarifying that wording a little bit. I mean, I think it says what you want it to say, but I found it a little bit awkward, the phrasing. Not that I couldn't accept it the way it is, but as long as we're going to make some changes, I wouldn't have a problem with cleaning up the language.
Anything else? I had one other query that didn't have to do with the waiver, but this section of the ordinance. When it gets down there and starts talking about RA in this section, I wondered why RA is not in the zoning of adjacent lands, second charter under B. Why is RA there?
I can't explain why it wasn't included in the chart. It was included in a section, a separate provision underneath the chart. It's.
If you start off with the ABC, the different ones, you put B, and I might not just be able to follow the flow. You had lands adjacent are zoned this way, and then later on, you say, "Okay, against RA, it's a C." And I'm thinking, I wonder how they introduced RA into the topic since it didn't flow down through there. But it's only a query that you all might look at when you're doing redraft.
Right. I mean, historically, that's the way it was drafted. I'm not sure if the chart came first, and then the RA buffer was added later. I would have to investigate the older ordinances to see how that happened, but.
If I'm correct, it's a house cleaning or keeping. If I'm not correct, and I just couldn't catch the flow.
And I'm not sure if, possibly one reason it wasn't included in the chart because the chart covers all land regardless of whether it's used or not, whereas the RA section is only if the RA land is used for residential purposes. So, whereas you would have, you would have to buffer against a two- or a five-acre lot that has a house on it, but not a 50-acre agricultural piece of land.
Satisfying me if you just take a look at it.
Yes, sir.
It did not seem to flow, but.
We will do that, yes, sir.
All right. Where are we?
Just a real quick comment. I found, it's just a formatting suggestion, but if we can get the header on the same page with the chart, it would certainly enhance readability. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't notice that. Where did you want to end up today? That's your request here.
Go to public hearing.
I would suspect not ready for a public hearing, but does the board think otherwise? Well.
Staff can address the issues that.
I think they're pretty simple to address.
Yes, sir.
But would we dare send it to public hearing, knowing that you got to do that? What's staff's opinion here?
I don't see any problem revising the ordinance to satisfy the board if you want to go ahead and send it to public hearing.
Mr. Riley? Your assistants?
I think staff has the gist of the board and can probably amend the text so that it's reflected in the public hearing.
Public hearing, requesting them to amend the text?
Yes, sir.
Is everybody comfortable with that? If you are, then I need a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Supervisor, was that Collins?
Yes.
A second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing done. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is discussion on screening for outdoor storage areas.
Again, thank you. This is another request that staff received to modify the ordinance for the screening requirements for outdoor storage areas. The current ordinance requires that all outdoor storage areas be completely screened from the view of road and street right-ofways and from surrounding properties by fence, wall, mound, berm, or such as landscape screening. Now, staff included another lovely graphic in your agenda that shows two properties that both have outdoor storage as their use. The bubbled area would be the buffer or the outdoor storage screening area, and then, draw on here, this would, oh, excuse me. And here would be the area that would be the common outdoor storage buff, screening area that would be eliminated under this ordinance. So, really, it would eliminate this outdoor storage from having to screen from outdoor storage. So, what we did, we prepared an ordinance that would eliminate the screening requirement when outdoor storage areas join another outdoor storage area so that they would not have to screen their common property lines. There's also another, a few other minor amendments that include surface material specifications as well as a landscaping exemption for the gravel areas. So, DRC discussed this at their June meeting and sent it forward to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission discussed this at their August 20th meeting and sent it forward to the board. So, again, tonight, we are seeking a direction from the board as to whether this is ready to be sent forward to public hearing. Glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Supervisor DeHaven?
A couple. It appeared from the list, and it was just a list, and it didn't go any further, that surface treatment materials, anything other than bare earth, was acceptable.
Yes.
And then, the question becomes, what happens when one of those users changes?
Right. That could be problematic. If you have an outdoor storage area next to an outdoor storage area, and then one of the outdoor storage areas changes use, then they could either install the screening requirement if they didn't want to look at the adjacent outdoor storage area, or they would either put up the screening themselves. the adjacent outdoor storage area, or they would either put up the screening themselves, or they would continue to look at the outdoor screening until the secondary property changed use.
It almost seems like buyer beware is appropriate.
Although it's likely to be in a lot of situations, a leasty and leastor's responsibility. But it answers my question.
Other questions, or?
I can just comment real fast, Mr. Chairman. One, that same question came up at the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commissioners had an interesting response, that you're essentially just deferring your landscape requirement. So, you don't install it today because you've got outdoor storage, and you've got one adjacent to you, and you want to redevelop in the future, and you don't want to see your neighbors' outdoor storage. Well, then you put your landscaping in. So, it's still your responsibility, whether you choose to implement landscaping, this gives you a chance to defer that option.
Any other questions? Is it ready for public hearing?
I think so.
Send it forward to public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor DeHaven to send it to public hearing. Is there a second? I think Supervisor Wells was nodding his head. Is that a second?
Sir.
Hearing in all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. We'll schedule a public hearing. Board liaisons reports, are there any? Mr. Riley and I, I think, are trying to, maybe it's now scheduled, a joint finance committee meeting. Has that actually been picked a date? We're still working on it.
It has not. We have one more meeting with the President of Council next week.
We don't have it yet.
But we will shortly.
Ultimately, the topic will be the courthouse, and so, when that happens, I will extend an invitation. You can't, you're not on the committee, or some of you are, but I'll make sure you know when it's happening, in case you're interested. Any other liaison reports? All right, citizen comments. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on any topic? If so, please come forward, give your name, magistrate, district, let me your comments to three minutes, please. Anyone?
I am Phil Willie, longtime resident of Frederick County. We had a refund by the Commissioner of Revenue for taxes of $44,000, whatever, but I did not hear the name of the company.
It was stated. We'll get you to you after the meeting.
Okay. Sorry. On the buffer that she wants, the ordinance, why don't we just let the landowner establish a buffer themselves instead of trying to legislate?
It's not something that really can be answered. You can make a comment, but I can't prepare an answer for you.
All right. Well, that's just a comment. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so you know we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments?
I'd just like to mention that at the last regular meeting under Liaison Reports, Supervisor Lofton reminded us of the open house out at the Virginia Tech Agricultural Research Center on August 16. I took advantage of that open house. I've been by that place dozens of times, never really had been back in there, and was really pretty impressed with the operation out there. Apparently, this is the first time that they've actually held an open house like this in a number of years. I encouraged them to do it more frequently because I thought it's really a jewel of a facility for the county, and I was quite impressed.
Any other supervisor comments?
Mr. Chairman, move for a German.
For your motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned.